Okay. So who are we missing?
Go ahead. It looks like we have eight members now. Oh, but here's David. There's our nine.
All right.
Just a moment for let him get on.
Yes, okay.
Okay, Joel, when you're ready. It looks like we have nine members.
Okay. So are there additions or deletions to the agenda? We get into it? No, that's good. Then first item is approval of the minutes of July 25th.
I'll move.
Think Rod jokes first. You want a second, Dan?
Sure.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Do we do a roll call for this?
Yep, I can do the roll call.
Okay.
David Shapiro. One more time.
About that, yes.
Thank you. Linda Woodard?
Yes.
Tim Murray?
Yes.
Rod Howe?
Yes.
Ruth Groff?
Yes.
Joanne James?
Yes.
Caitlin Olson? Caitlin Olson?
Oh, it came up. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Thank you, Dan Lamb?
Here. Yes.
Thank you. Joel Gagnon?
Yes.
Hey. We're all set. Stay back.
Okay. Report from county administration.
Thank you. Unfortunately, Lisa wasn't able to come today. She asked me to come. I'm Deputy County Administrator Nora Jane. Just a couple of updates. So we have our, as you know, the budget meetings and expanded budget committee just concluded their reviews of department budgets last, the other night, and will have a public forum on September 30th at 5:30 in the legislature chambers. The members are invited to come and either attend in person or virtually. If you're, if you have folks that want to attend virtually, they should pre-register and so that they can be able to speak. They'll be similar to what they, we do for the legislature meetings. There'll be a three-minute timeline. Our legislators are beginning to submit their amendments. We are compiling those right now. We've got about 20 or so, and we'll be posting those to our website very soon, probably by the end of today. Also, the Code Blue Shelter is in process for the Tioga Street property, the temporary Code Blue Shelter at the Key Bay Building. The facilities team is reviewing the necessary changes that need to be made to accommodate for the residents, and the Department of Social Services is in the process of hiring staff to support that shelter. The county administrator sent out communications to several neighbors, nonprofits, and community members today. So that concludes my report. If folks have any questions.
That was great. Thank you, Dan.
Joel, one more time, please.
I just wanted, I thought perhaps Dan had raised his hand. No, okay. So no questions for Nora? Thank you.
I, I, what time did you say the meeting is on the 30th?
5:30.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Nora.
You're welcome.
Nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
Subcommittee leaders and other reports, cybersecurity. Caitlin.
Hi. Well, I reached out to my fellow committee members earlier today, and I have, were planning on a kind of a Zoom roundtable to look at municipal solutions for building permits. So I've reached out to the town of Ithaca. I've already heard back from Huga Heights. And because I know both of those municipalities have, have used, have different, and different approaches to doing building permits, and it seems like there might be some interest in how other municipalities could potentially learn from their examples. Huga Heights is using Laserfish, which would have some, I think, probably real benefit to the smaller municipalities who may not be able to afford to go for a software route. My understanding is Ithaca has software. I learned today that Dryden also has gone the software route, so I'll reach out to Dryden as well. But we're looking to just host kind of an information session late October, early November, after the towns go through their budget, real intense budget process, and so that we can, we can learn from what our colleagues are doing. So I can just tell you, the town of Ulysses was looking into doing software for a while, and it just proved prohibitively expensive. And when we were looking, and then all the costs associated with maintaining, and whether or not that was a good choice for somebody our size. So that's, that's the plan for late October, November, and I'll make sure that an invite goes out. So thank you to the municipalities who are willing to participate.
Thank you, Caitlin. Tim, you have a question?
No, I was just going to mention that Caroline also signed a contract with the company, but we're also interested in Laserfish, so we're figuring all this out.
Oh, wonderful. Well, if you're, maybe you'll have something to share at that meeting also, so it'd be great to, to share your experience also. So I'll reach out. Who should I reach out? Should I reach out to Code there or the supervisor?
Mark.
I'll do that. Great, thank you.
I can, Dambie did the same thing last month. Linda, do you have a question?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to put in a plug for Laserfish. We've been using it for a couple of years now. Great support from the county itself, and zero cost, and it works quite well. So municipalities that don't have lots of money to throw at this, we'd be more than happy to show you how we do it, have a workshop, whatever, if municipalities want to see how we're doing it.
Thanks so much, Linda.
Yep.
Excellent. Leon, right, emergency planning. Mark's not here. Tim, were you, were you going to speak to that or?
Dan, Mark said that maybe you wanted to do that.
Who?
Dan, you muted.
Yeah, you're not muted, but we're not hearing you for some reason.
How about now?
Yes.
That's better? Okay. So you have in your agenda pack, it's this resolution that we talked about at our previous meeting that our EMS committee has been working on.
Which one? Is that the one in the truck for the?
I think we're talking about EMS. Correct me if I'm wrong.
What, whether it's an essential service or not, right?
Yeah, that's where we are right now, right? The resolution?
Well, we're not at the resolution with the committee reports, but, but the two could be associated here.
Sure, they're definitely associated. Maybe I'll wait then to talk about the resolution. But I do want to just mention that we continue to meet on a monthly, if not more, basis to talk about our emergency response crisis in this county. And we've been hearing a lot from the ambulance companies. We've had guests from Dryden Ambulance and folks representing Truman's Fair Ambulance, just gathering information and recognizing the unsustainable path that we're on right now in terms of emergency response, and how it gets, gets paid for. So that's our focus, and we've worked on this resolution, which is agenda item number five, I think. Four, six, six.
Okay, so we will elaborate when we get to it.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Dan. Rod just.
There's no report.
Yep. And I don't see our colleague from Enfield to talk about transportation. So that brings us right to that resolution, Dan.
Wonderful. Does everyone have it in front of them?
Okay, we screen share it for everybody?
We could.
Another screen.
It's, I tell you what, it's not necessary. I think you've heard a lot of this before. What brought this to mind for me was that the state senate and the governor have moved to declare EMS and ambulance services an essential service in New York, just as we do with fire. Currently, of course, is not done on an essential basis, and towns may contract with EMS providers, but we're not required. The town of Dryden does. Many of the other towns do not. What the governor proposed in her last budget was to make it an essential service. Legislation that passed the state senate would make it an essential service, but it's not yet passed the New York State Assembly. So we believe that it would be meaningful for Tompkins County to continue to lead, as we do in many other ways, if the legislature were to send a strong message to our state delegation, particularly to the New York State Assembly, about the necessity of passing this legislation that would require EMS and ambulance services to be declared an essential service, and that counties, cities, villages, towns would act individually or together to ensure that it is provided. That's a core aspect of this legislation. Additionally, it defines essential service and EMS. It establishes an EMS council to monitor the progress of meeting emergency services needs across the state, establishes a training program, and establishes additional credentialing programs for recruiting and training EMS personnel. As we all know by now that we have quite a shortage of EMS personnel in this state. It's a statewide problem. This legislation is also a rural problem. It, it would address this gap. It doesn't apply to municipalities over 1 million, primarily because of the density that occurs in these larger municipalities. It's profitable to run an ambulance service. Out where we are, and many of you are, the cost per mile goes way up. And so we have to look at a new model for providing this service. And so that's what this, this legislation would do. And also, the fact that it's not addressed in state law signifies that it's undervalued, you know, that the New York State does not recognize EMS as essential, whereas we do see fire as essential. I think any of us who have called 911 in an emergency, expect somebody to show up, it's essential, and we assume that it's going to be responded to. But the fact of the matter is, depending on where you live in Tompkins County, you can have a, quite a delay in getting emergency services. So this is one step in a process that we're engaged in. We want to send this message out. We want to continue to work with our county legislators and our other municipalities throughout this, this county to address this problem, because you've heard me say this before, but we've got a couple of professional companies in this county that are subsidizing the rest of the county. Some 30% of Dryden ambulance calls go outside of our taxing jurisdiction, and that's not a sustainable model. EMS calls are a growing proportion of fire and rescue responses. They, like Ithaca Fire Department, 40% of their responses are EMS, and that's going up. And similarly for, for Dryden, and I'm sure in many of the other municipalities. So I'm happy to say I already have a county legislator who's interested in carrying this to the legislature. Greg Mezzi's on, on this issue. He cares a lot about it. Of course, he represents Dryden very effectively on the legislature, so I'll be working with Greg to shape this up into something that the county legislature can take up right away. So I ask for your unanimous support.
Well, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we move that we approve it, and then, and then we can have a discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So I noticed, Dan, when I read it, that it doesn't reference any particular legislation. Declaring it an essential service is, I suppose, a great step in the right direction, but shouldn't it be promoting some sort of legislative response to the, to the declaration?
Well, it's too late in this current legislative year to pass any bill recognized by number. Once the legislature reconvenes in January, legislation will have to be reintroduced, and the governor will have to reintroduce, well, introduce her proposed budget, and we would recognize a new bill number. The last bill number would no longer apply. That's why we're not singling out a bill number. But essential service, that's what this bill is. And whatever the number is assigned to it will be what we advocate for.
Mm-hmm. So you anticipate that the, that the Senate would take it up again and pass it again? That would happen next year with, under a new number?
Yeah. It passed in May, and we were watching very closely what happened in the assembly, and the black box at the state assembly is, it was kind of hard to track what entities sidetracked it, but you know how, well, maybe none of us really know how it works behind the scenes there, but some interest group felt like their, their ox was going to get gored by this, and they were able to, to get it removed from the assembly bill.
But this resolution essentially asks, well, puts us on, on the record as supporting that declaration, and asks that the legislature do the same.
The county legislature to send a message. Now, our state reps right now don't have a problem with this. I don't, we're not going to be twisting Assembly member Kelly's arm or Senator Webb about this. I've already spoken to both.
I did so. So any any additional comments before we vote on it? Like we're ready.
Okay, here we go. I have David Shapiro.
Always first, huh? Yes.
Thank you. Linda Woodard?
Yes.
Tim Murray?
Yes.
Rod Howe?
Yes.
Ruth Groff?
Yes.
Joanne James?
Yes.
Caitlin Olson?
Yes.
Dan Lamb?
Yes.
And Joel Gagnon?
Yes. So indeed, unanimous support.
Yep.
Thanks, everyone.
Next item, bigger trucks. Who's speaking to this?
I, I think, I think I probably am, Joel.
Okay.
This is, this is a resolution that came as a result of a presentation made by a group to the town of Caroline, and there is state legislation. I'm not sure if a representative of that group is here or not.
I am.
Yep, Rob is here.
So Rob came to the town of Caroline and made a presentation, and we actually passed the unanimous resolution in support of it. We thought it would be good for the TCOG to also address it. But maybe, Rob, can I just ask Rob to say a few words about it, Joel?
Sure.
So maybe, Rob, you can just give a little nutshell about what this is about?
Of course. Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time. Well, thank you for inviting me to speak to this meeting. I appreciate all you allowing me the opportunity. A quick introduction. My name is Rob Ballounis. I'm the Regional Director for the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. For anyone who is not aware of, you know, our organization, we are a national grassroots organization. We work with local law enforcement, fire EMS, public works, elected officials, basically anyone dealing with commercial truck traffics in their area, all with the express purpose of preventing any sort of weight or length increase for those tractor trailers. You know, we come at this from two different aspects. There is the public safety aspect. You know, you'd have to be a physicist to realize adding more weight to a back of a tractor trailer makes that vehicle harder to stop, harder to control. God forbid they're involved in a crash. They can lead to a larger crash site and a more severe crash site. And then also there's the public infrastructure aspect. You know, these things tear up roads, wear down bridges at a faster rate, cave-in culverts, you know, just general everyday road maintenance. These vehicles have a larger effect on. And none of these bills that ever would increase truck weights or truck lengths ever come with funding for communities to keep up with that expedited maintenance routine, maintenance routine. And so that's who we are, and you know, what, why we do what we do. You know, we like to say we're the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. We're not the Coalition Against the Trucking Industry. You know, we actually work pretty closely with the trucking industry on this issue. Groups like the Teamsters, groups like the Truck Carers Association, who represent a lot of the more mom and pop and medium-sized trucking companies. They're all on board with our, our organization. It's your big shippers of the world who tend to really be in favor of these. And you know, they get the profits, but the communities that these vehicles go through have to deal with the consequences of it. So that's who we are and what we're doing. You know, the reason that I'm here today and is because there is an effort, it's actually on, in Congress, to raise truck weights to, from, from 80,000 pounds, which is the federal maximum. New York has a couple exemptions here and there for certain commodities, but New York is broadly in line with the 80,000-pound limit to raise it from 80,000 to 91,000 pounds. So that is an 11,000-pound weight increase for all commodities. You know, being allowed to go on any road that is considered a federal road. So, you know, I-81 is a good example. That's close to your neck of the woods. I know it doesn't run through the county, but it runs, runs pretty close to it. You know, most interstates or US routes, those are, would be considered federal roads. So it's essentially a blank check for any commodity to start operating at those heavier weights with the goal of, you know, it's being billed as a pilot project, but the only project, the only data they're looking to collect is how many times these crash, how many times people are hurting those crashes, and how many people are killed in those crashes, which, you know, our partners in law enforcement like to point out is a horrible way to, A, collect data, and B, we shouldn't be turning our public motorways into a crash test lab, so your UPSs of the world can carry a couple more packages. So you know, that's who we are, what we're doing, and what's been going on, what, some of you probably have gotten emails from me in the past trying to set up, set up meetings. I apologize if I bother you that much, but you know, this is an important issue that is, you know, affects communities a lot more than people realize. You know, and that's, that's the quick 30,000-foot overview. If people have questions, I'm happy to answer them as best as I can.
Well, just one.
Maybe I can just add that the reason that Caroline was interested in endorsing this, this proposal is specifically because of our dependence, of our dependency on adjacency to, to 81, but also in memory of the bleed-off that we've experienced upstate through 79, through 96, up in skinny Atlas through 20 of the trash trucks from New York City. And although those trucks aren't directly covered by this legislation, we're concerned that any upscale in one, in one dimension could lead to bleed off of upscale in another, and so this, this indeed would directly impact Tompkins County.
And I take it that the federal limits govern essentially what, what, what allowable on, on other roads as well?
So.
Trucks don't suddenly become heavier when they get on the interstate.
Yes.
When they get off.
Yeah, yeah. So you're right. No truck trip starts and stops on an interstate. So within federal law, there is provisions that usually requires trucks to be able to operate within, I believe it's a mile and a half of an interstate. So you know, that's to get, to make your deliveries, to stop, excuse me, stop, get gas, you know, refuel or take breaks, all, all that stuff. States themselves have the ability to raise and, and lower weights on state, on state and county maintained roads that are outside that mile and a half limit. So, but what we've seen historically is when the feds raise the weights, the states then raise the weight to allow ease of access for those vehicles throughout the entire, the entire state, not just within that mile and a half, mile and a half. Um, I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, so is that the history of New York is following suit?
Yes. New York broadly stays in line with the federal, the federal maximum. Like I said, there's a certain, there's some, certain commodities on the state level, mostly agricultural products that are able to operate above the 80,000. But like I said, those tend to stick to your state and county roads. They don't go on I-80 or anything.
So we have a resolution. Would somebody like to propose it?
I'd be, I'd be happy to propose it.
You have a second?
I'll second.
That was Bruce, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Not seeing any. So to the vote.
Okay, here we go. David Shapiro? Uh-oh, has he fallen off?
Dan?
Okay, just a moment. Okay, sorry, everyone. We're just waiting a moment. We lost David, and Pierre is coming on. Hi, Pierre, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so we have a mover and a seconder for the resolution, ID 12763.
Yeah.
And we're about to vote on that, okay?
Okay.
Okay, Pierre, you're first.
This is what I get for forgetting to update my calendar. Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to resume back to discussion? Yeah.
Um, I don't, can, can I abstain?
Unfortunately, no.
Can you come back to me?
Yes, I absolutely can do that. Okay, we'll go to Linda.
Uh, about, yes.
Thank you. Tim Murray?
Yes.
Rod Howe?
Yes.
Ruth Groff?
Yes.
Joanne James?
Yes.
Caitlin Olson?
Yes.
Dan Lamb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
And we're back to Pierre.
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Bob, for your work. So, uh, let's see. Cybersecurity is a, is a topic of discussion. It may also be a topic of discussion in executive session by and by. Not sure how we connect those two. Or maybe it would become apparent if we do the first part. Let's see where we go from there. So who's? Is that, is that Lauren?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for coming.
Absolutely. So. Absolutely. So, um, wasn't sure, uh, what exactly you guys were looking for, but, um, happy to go in depth. I do have a few things I can go over and then if you do want to go into, um, some sort of executive session to talk about individual circumstances or anything that may be operational security that we wouldn't want to talk about in a public meeting, I'm happy to do so as well. So maybe I can share my screen and just go through a few bullet points.
Great idea.
All right, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Great.
Can you make it any bigger?
Oh, now you're really pushing that. Sure.
It's legible. Yeah, wow, that's way better.
Yeah. All right, how's that?
Great.
Great. Okay, so, um, I think, uh, I had someone from the legislature, sorry, I forget who, uh, send out a couple links to, um, to NISAC, which, um, I help co-author a, um, publication, a cybersecurity primer for local leaders. It, um, it's a pretty good read as far as, um, the depth of cybersecurity and what's involved. And, um, and so I would recommend taking a peek at that if you haven't already. And, um, along those same lines, there's, uh, NISAC also has kind of a, a news and resources page, which they periodically update, and that's probably worth looking at as well. I also, um, think this was sent out, uh, there is tomorrow a webinar from, uh, Department of Homeland Security, New York State I T S, the state police, and, um, it may not affect you as much, but the New York State Board of Elections. And that will be kind of an update on what the state, um, is doing in the cyber arena. We're pretty lucky at the county and as we go through my other bullet points, we're, we're pretty lucky at the county that, um, we have over the last couple of years, um, been entitled to some, cybersecurity tools that, um, we wouldn't have probably been able to afford, uh, before. Things like, um, an E D R solution, CrowdStrike, that the state's paying for. I do believe that the city of Ithaca and the town of Ithaca are also, can leverage that as well, being the next two largest municipalities within the county. My hope is that, um, is that on that, uh, webinar tomorrow that they'll, they'll try to give an update. I think everybody realizes at the state level that, you know, all the municipalities need a little extra help in this arena. So I think that's their goal. I just don't know how far down the role that, road that is. So if you can tune into that, I think there'll be a lot of data. And, uh, you know, some of it may be useful, some of it may not be so useful. All right, scrolling up to the top. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of zip down through these. Feel free to interrupt me, talk about it. This is, uh, this is your time. So whatever questions you have, just, um, just ask them.
Since you, uh, since you raised the possibility, um, just to, just to back up just a tad.
Sure.
Um, I'm, I'm hearing from what you just said that the, uh, the state is addressing this, um, you know, but they're doing it, doing it from a sort of a, the largest municipalities are working their way down. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
It is. So they, it started with all the counties, um, for the first initiative being the endpoint detection response, rolling, which is CrowdStrike, um, and rolling that out to, or offering it to all the counties. And then they came back and said that we now offer it to the next two largest municipalities, which in our case would be the town of Ithaca and the city of Ithaca. My hope is, I don't know what time period, but would be that they start working with, um, you know, I don't know how they would do it, where they would say, say, you know, the next two largest or what their criteria would be, but, um, and I haven't heard any update on that.
Thanks.
Sure. Okay, um, so just a few bullet points, um, you know, depending on where people are in their cybersecurity posture, sometimes a, a risk assessment, um, whether that's formal, informal, and, um, to kind of, uh, see where you are with things that, um, that you have in place. We typically at the county, we, we do, um, a couple of risk assessments a year. And, um, we kind of take the information from that to put in our work plan for the following year. And, um, no one can ever be a hundred percent when it comes to cybersecurity. So there's, there's always something to reach for. So here are a few things that, um, you know, that would be done in, in an assessment. And, um, the second bullet point would be cybersecurity awareness and training. We tend to, uh, do several things in that arena at the county. We use a company called KnowBefore, which does phishing tests and also we, it's kind of like our learning management system. And how we roll out our training to all of our users for yearly trainings. And, um, we have, uh, two or three trainings within that that has to do with cybersecurity. Typically a ten or fifteen minute, uh, video and or some tips and tricks on phishing and malware and kind of the, kind of the basics, but, um, we have gone to the quarterly phishing, um, tests to now monthly. As we are seeing quite a few more attacks here at the county as far as, uh, phishing and malware attacks through email. I would say that, uh, you know, that, that's one of the higher ones, uh, maybe in the low hanging fruit area. Again, happy to talk specifics with anybody, uh, if you want, um, after, uh, or an executive session. Uh, multi-factor authentication. I mean, I think we've all been faced with that. We use multi-factor authentication for anything that we can. We still have more systems that we're trying to put MFA on. But things like email is certainly, um, you know, important. And you can take it all the way to the level of logging into your machine that, um, that uses MFA. So certainly for any VPN access, any e, external email access, um, MFA is, is mandatory in our organization. Um, strong passwords, um, you know, that, uh, that becomes more important. We, again, we, we experience a lot of brute force attacks, which is basically password spraying. Um, we get hit thousands of times a day trying to break into our, our network. And we have enforced a minimum of fourteen character password with, you know, special characters, capitals, numerics. So that was something that our, our users weren't really happy about, but, um, we, uh, we also, um, the caveat there was a, a long, strong password. They wouldn't have to change it as often. So it was, uh, a little reward once that went in place.
Now, Carrie, I see. How often do you have to update or change?
Yeah. So once we went to the longer, um, longer password, uh, we went to a year, which, uh, made people happy. So, um, so it's longer password, but, uh, you have it up, up to a year. We, we were at ninety days before. Patching, updates and patching, that's, um, that's probably for us, it's, it's a heavy lift. We have a lot of devices, a lot of users, a lot of laptops, a lot of, um, conference room setups, a lot of HVAC control. I mean, we, there's more I O T devices. Um, so for us, this is challenging. You know, it's, uh, basically a full-time job, keeping things up to date. Not only things like the Windows systems, but, um, you know, things like you may not think about, you know, cameras and, uh, you know, HVAC controllers, like I mentioned, um, so anything that's, uh, basically attached to the network, you know, firewalls, routers, switches. Sooner or later requires an update. And, you know, there's, uh, I'll get in too, I'll try not to get too far into the weeds, but, um, you've probably all heard of zero day vulnerabilities. Um, those are vulnerabilities that come out that they may not necessarily have a, a patch for, but, and then you're forced to kind of make some decisions on whether you take that offline, um, and or, you know, assume the risk. Data backup and discovery, um, you know, we, backups have certainly changed over the last twenty years, fifteen years, five years. It's, uh, immutable backups are, are important. Um, if bad actor does get into your network and your, and your backups are part of your network and can be encrypted or ransomwared. That's why that immut, immutable backup is so important. Lots of ways to do that these days with, you know, cloud backups and, um, different on-prem solutions. Most places are becoming hybrid like us, uh, where we have a little bit in the cloud, we have a little bit on-prem. And we've got solutions that, um, that back up both. And again, happy to talk specifics if anyone, anybody wants to. Antivirus, um, E D R solutions, like I mentioned, um, we were lucky enough to be supplied to CrowdStrike, which has proven itself time and time again for us. The, again, we're lucky because the endpoint detection and response, response being the the key word there is that CrowdStrike is watching over our network and our endpoints twenty-four seven. So if I had a, let's say dispatcher at two o'clock in the morning, click on something that they shouldn't have, CrowdStrike can contain that computer, they will actually, um, remediate it and, uh, let me sleep and send me an email that said that it was, uh, it was taken care of, worth its weight in gold. So again, if, uh, you know, my hope is that that solution will come down to anybody that wants to leverage that.
Hey, Lauren.
Yes.
Oh, um, I just realized there's not a chat function. I was just kind of going through and listening. Um, so you might want to just tell them what an immutable backup is. These are things that I'm hearing and I'm thinking they're like, oh, that sounds great, but they might not actually be like, oh, what is that?
And this isn't a Zoom bomber. This is Kim Moore, my deputy director. So she's here, uh, to support me. So yeah, immutable backup is basically a, a backup that's air gap that, um, that can't be reached by, you know, somebody that, um, that, uh, did some, credential harvesting or is maybe, um, you know, in the olden days, it was kind of, you did everything to tape, you put it in a fireproof safe or you took it to the bank and those were immutable backups. Um, now, most organizations, there's so much data that deal tape, routine has kind of gotten, uh, out of date. Um, there's still people that use tapes. But immutable backups can take shape and form of several different, um, ways. There's, uh, SAN, which is Storage Area Network or Storage that can use snapshots immutable. You can use one of the many cloud solutions that take it offline after it's backed up. So I hope that made sense.
Secure the cloud and storage as itself.
Yeah, um, you know, there's, there's several out there. There's one in particular that, uh, that we use and they, um, they still claim that they've never lost anybody's, uh, data. And, uh, good question, Joel. You have, you have to actually, and, and, um, and the solution we use, you actually have to have Quorum. So if somebody stole my password, they would still, if we wanted to delete a backup, let's say, they would need, um, two other, uh, admin accounts to, to delete that backup. And then it still would send, you know, all sorts of alerts and, and those kind of things. So, so yeah, the, um, the cloud solutions are, are trustworthy and, um, there's a few different choices out there. So again, uh, network infrastructure, um, you know, firewalls, encryption, uh, and regular penetration tests. Uh, again, there are, I believe there are services that probably would be free for most municipalities. We, um, we use something from the, the critical infrastructure, the CISA folks, um, at the federal dishes to, or Department of Homeland Security. We do cyber hygiene scans. So they basically take our IP address scheme and they scan it once a week and send us any, um, anything that they find, any vulnerabilities. And then we also do a web application scanning, which, um, any, uh, web servers or anything that we have internally that is public facing, they scan and make sure that there's no vulnerabilities and then give us a report on that. So, again, I can give some of those resources, those, um, depending on how much you keep on-prem, you may or may not be sharing anything out on-prem and that, you know, may or may not be useful. User access with rule-based, um, access control or zero trust is basically giving, um, rights to, to what people need and, and no more. So a good example is that, um, is that, uh, the administrators and I T, we have a, a regular user account that we use for our, our emails and, um, day-to-day work. And then we have, um, and then an administrator account that if we needed to, let's say, change a person's password or reboot a server or something like that, we would use those accounts. So kind of keeping, keeping the responsibilities, um, different, um, and also, you know, not giving all your users the same rights if they don't need it. So even to, to data. So if, uh, the accounting department needs, uh, you know, the financial data, but, um, you know, other users in the organization don't need that data and there's, you know, HIPAA data or P I I data, then making sure that the appropriate rights are given so that that data isn't, um, accessed unsecurely. Uh, incident response plans, um, having kind of a playbook in case, uh, in case the big day comes or a cyber incident happens. Um, you know, who do you call? Your vendors listed in there. There's, uh, lots to talk about in that arena. Again, happy to, to take that offline and, and, um, and play through that. Part of an incident response plan is to do tabletops and, um, for us, we, we have done a couple of tabletops this year. We've done some that have revolved around elections, some that, um, we've had the New York State Department of Homeland Security come in and run a couple of tabletops for us. And it just kind of, uh, the more you do those tabletops, it becomes muscle memory. We invite players like finance, county admin, our communications director, our legislature department heads, and, um, we play through an, an incident and, uh, it's usually over. Um, the incident itself is over three or four days and how it builds and as you find more data and, um, you, you know, the players around the room and what they would do, uh, it's pretty useful, um, use of time. So, um, that, uh, that goes along with the incident response plan as you kind of have the incident response plan out. Uh, you kind of follow it, um, and, uh, uh, it's kind of the playbook so that when things get, uh, a little hectic, you have something to follow. Let's see. Collaborate with cybersecurity experts, um, the, uh, multi-state information sharing on an, an analysis center. I believe you got everyone on the call or any municipality can join that. They are feeds for any cyber activity that may be happening and anything that you should be looking out for. A lot of times, um, things that are, uh, known vulnerabilities or new vulnerabilities, uh, or any, um, activity that's happening around the state, uh, will come out via that forum and, um, a lot of it you can just quickly glance at and say, well, I don't have a, you know, a Palo Alto firewall, so I can delete that. Don't have to worry about that. Or I do have a Palo Alto firewall and maybe I should make sure that it, um, has the appropriate patches. So I would strongly recommend joining any of these, uh, information sharing groups that you can. The M S A C is, uh, is probably the most popular. And, uh, we subscribe to a lot of them, um, state troopers, uh, M S A C, uh, dishes, um. So sometimes we get the same thing a few times, but, uh, and they become a little bit of a alert fatigue, but, um, but at least getting one or two peas, I'd, I'd certainly recommend. Let's see. Yeah. And, um, depending on, you know, what kind of things you're doing in the cloud, um, you know, and making sure that things are being backed up, make sure that you're conscious. you know, and making sure that things are being backed up, make sure that your contracts and um, uh, earn orders, cases of breach or, or um, you know, how they're dealing with encryption or things like um, associate, business associate agreements. Uh, so there's a lot of work in that area and um, our risk administrator and our county attorney, um, we typically have uh, default language that we put in contracts, um, and uh, that way if they happen to get um, compromised, that, you know, we have something to fall back on. Here at the county, we have all sorts of regulations, you know, we don't, I didn't put CGIS and HIPAA and um, so, so certainly we, you know, we need to make sure our data is safe and um, you know, and things like breach notification policies, you know, in case we did get um, we did get breached, um, you know, the proper pass to, to report that breach, et cetera. And then I think the last one, kind of ripping down through here, um, is cyber insurance. Um, we, here at the county, um, we have a cyber insurance policy. And that was the first step. The second step is really understanding uh, what, how you'd use cyber insurance in an actual cyber event, um, and understanding the policy and when they would actually come into play. Uh, every cyber insurance policy is a little bit different. Some of them want you to kind of be uh, calling them uh, as soon as you realize that, that you have something going on. Um, they typically will keep uh, consultants, cybersecurity consultants on um, on retainer. They'll also, if it becomes to the, to the point where they actually have ransomwareed your network or your data, um, and uh, you consider, I'm not saying that you'd ever do this, but um, that you wanted to negotiate with the bad actors to get your data back. They sometimes will provide that um, that resource for negotiation. So so that's kind of a quick highlight of um, of a bunch of things that we could probably, I could sit here and talk to you for hours about each one of them, but happy to uh, take any questions or again, we can park this and take it off in executive session, whatever you'd like.
Need to get back to it. There we go. So there's, that was a splendid overview, Lauren.
Yeah, maybe I put everybody to sleep. So and if so, I, I have to worry about that. Fascinating.
It's important and it's not something that, that uh, it, you, it's not sexy.
No.
You, you, you talked about low hanging, low hanging fruit early in the, in the.
Sure.
Um, and um, your, your practices for, for basically uh, testing how effectively the training, how effective training has been with, with uh, with uh, challenges. Is that something that might be uh, something you could do for, for municipalities as sort of a way of, of uh, sort of uh, probing where how, how effective we are in, in our measures?
Yeah, so, so typically the way we um, periodically test people and we're doing it monthly now is uh, is our phishing campaign. So we, we use a company called Novi4 that um, we can make the uh, the phishing tests as easy or hard as we want to. Um, so we recently uh, our, our security position was open for a bit. Um, and so we were, we all still take um, in each position here at I T, we all have a, a part in, in cybersecurity. Right now, um, our information security analyst who's been with us for a few months, um, has stepped up our game a little bit, uh, to doing those phishing tests monthly. And um, she's also put together a few videos that are, have been included in our, in our yearly training. Um, we've implemented things like the phishing alert button so that the people see, you know, uh, a suspect email, they could report it and um, our information security analyst is looking at those uh, during the day, getting back to people, whether that um, it was a real email, most of the time not, most of the time they are phishing. Uh, but the advantage to having somebody kind of on that heartbeat is that there, if somebody reports a, a message that comes in, she's able to uh, query our whole um, email server, see who else got it and immediately remove the messages. Um, so now that we're phishing, um, once a month, we're starting to increase how hard those phishing uh, emails are. So, and if people fail the phishing, you know, they click on something they shouldn't, they get some um, one-on-one training. So uh, which is pretty effective. So um, that's kind of how we're handling it. Um, some of the state-provided solutions, um, from either dishes or the um, the federal um, CISA organization may have some free phishing campaign tools or you could request that uh, they run that against your environment and then they would give you the results. So if you don't have your own tool, there are, there are some uh, I think state-provided tools that will uh, do that for you.
It looks to me like uh, there's, there's grist here for, for the I T committee, um, Caitlin to, to um, follow up on, on, on some of this. Looking, looking at how we can take advantage of um, what the county is doing to help municipalities.
Absolutely. I think that's great. I think um, a good first step for everybody who can attend tomorrow's event um, is would, would be really good. Um, would it be possible to get the document that you walked us through?
Sure.
Jared?
So Caitlin, just to let you know, as Lauren was talking, I was doing a little team's chat with Norma and what I did was I put together a little document of the terms that he was kind of popping out there and put some pretty plain language explanations. So we're going to get those over to you guys. And um, Lauren, I was hoping you could give a little plug for when we, for example, offer workshops like we did last December.
Sure. So um, so yeah, I'm not sure the next time we'll do uh, like a county-wide cyber workshop. Last December, we did have um, several partners come in, state partners, uh, the New York State Department of Homeland Security Cyber Incident Response Team, uh, the whole team came down and did a, a nice presentation of um, you know, some of the things we're talking about today, some of the tools that are offered. Um, they went through a, a quick tabletop scenario. Um, so we'll keep everybody abreast of if we pull that off again. Um, they're usually on a, a two-year tour, I think, at this point. So we may not get them back until um, you know, next year sometime, but uh, certainly keep um, you guys updated if we do bring them back.
It was a great forum. It was a great eye-opener for many of us.
Yes, we appreciate you coming, Joel.
So I would throw out there that I think um, the municipalities fall in two different categories. One category is those that are large enough to have their own I T people on staff and those of us who are small and contract out. And for those, I, I, I think a lot of these things are, it's really helpful when you have somebody on staff because there's, you know, there's a sense of cohesion and in um, and professional intimacy, right? Um, that is, can be enabled in some of these um, education things. But then in a town like mine, um, you know, a lot of, I, can I appreciate that you are going to be putting into English words, um, some of the descriptions? Because uh, for someone like me who doesn't have a background in that, it can be slightly intimidating and we have a wonderful, we have, I think, what I think we have is some wonderful support. But I think something to be really helpful for, for the smaller entities might be the questions we should be asking to see if, is, if those kinds of things are in fact happening. Cause many of the things you mentioned, I tangentially know happen in some capacity, like, you know, um, having um, uh, password changes every so often on a, on a rather routine basis, things like that. Um, but sometimes it would be helpful to know what questions we should be asking our providers if we are outsourcing a lot of our management and it's unfrequently, I don't think we know what, what questions to be asking them to make sure that we're actually getting the um, the best service that we can um, in a changing cyber uh, environment.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm available if you ever want to just call me up and chat. So I'm happy to do that. Um, um, or like I said, I can come back to this periodically and give an update and um, you know, some of the latest and greatest things that we're seeing. Um, again, we get a lot of feeds just cause uh, we're the county, we have elections going on, so we're getting inundated with all sorts of election security and cybersecurity um, stuff right now. We just got off a call uh, this morning and um, you know, so that's, that's going to be uh, our hot ticket item for the next month and a half or so. But um, yeah, feel free to call me anytime. I'm more than happy to talk through your individual circumstances. Um, give any resources that I can or any guidance.
Great, thank you. Well, Joel, maybe we can, maybe we can reach out and actually get through the election, not before that. Uh, maybe in, in early twenty twenty-five, maybe we could, we could, you could meet with the subcommittee because I bet I, my perspectives is only, is only one. Um, and I'm sure that my other committee members might have um, some, some interesting approaches to ask you questions as well. So I'll reach out. So, but don't worry, no, not pre-election.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
And thanks. I mean, I, I particularly appreciate Lauren, your, your sort of layman's terms approach to explaining this whole scenario.
I'm happy to get off in the weeds if you want me to, Joel, but to this forum.
That was great, cause um, it's easy to get lost in the weeds in this subject there. There's so much jargon out there and um, and the rapidly evolving landscape to boot.
Yeah.
So thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Shall we move on to our uh, next item with the, with Cameron Schlosschutz? I'm seeing, there you go.
Yeah. Hey Joel, hello everyone. Can you turn that off please? We're on dueling computers here in the same room, so I, I do apologize. My name is Kurt Anderson. I'm with the Ethicary Economic Development. Um, we are tasked with on behalf of the larger economic development resource providers group across the county and really everyone in the county, every five years or so is to revisit our comprehensive countywide economic development strategy. Um, that time has come. We have uh, consulted with Camoyen Associates out of the Albin area, Saratoga Springs, I think. Um, to conduct this, they're very familiar with our area with New York in general. Uh, I'll introduce uh, my visitors here in a second. Both have ties to this area. Um, we're about halfway through the process and where we're at right now is um, holding focus group meetings. Uh, yesterday, we held a small business innovators entrepreneurs focus group meeting, a workforce development focus group meeting. Uh, they just finished up with the I A E D board meeting prior to this. And you, the Tompkins County Council of Governments and selected planners who I see are also on this call, um, are identified as being our focus group number four. The idea being really to solicit your input, the things that are going well, the things that aren't, the things you'd like to see. Um, you should have received in advance a set of questions from Camoyen Associates. Um, it's okay if you haven't reviewed those things, but uh, we're going to kind of go through those questions and they'll encourage you to speak freely and, and um, really, really make sure that your voice is heard, right? This is, it's not your last opportunity to participate. Um, but this is certainly a, a inflection point in the whole process where we're soliciting that background information to inform the strategy, which you'll see later. So without further ado, I will hand it over to uh, Lindsay Johnson of Camoyen Associates and then she'll introduce her colleague after that. Thank you again for having us.
Thanks Kurt and hi everybody. Really appreciate you letting us carve out some time on the agenda today to share a little bit more about the Tompkins County Economic Development Strategy and then asking all some questions to get the perspectives of different municipalities on where we can lead into economic development opportunities and start thinking ahead about implementation. I'm going to share my screen here just to show you a few slides to orient you with this process and where we are in it. So bear with me one second while I share screen. Just a bit about Camoyen Associates. Kurt mentioned, we have roots in upstate New York. We were founded in Saratoga Springs in nineteen ninety-nine and have done quite a bit of work in communities of all sizes, really got our start in rural communities and within the state, but we're now nationwide and we've worked in forty-six U S states as well as the U S Virgin Islands. Um, we're a small team of twenty-five to thirty employees and we work on several different service areas. I primarily focus on strategic and organizational planning, um, which is what I'm doing as project manager for this work in Tompkins County. But we're a full-service economic development firm. So we do everything from market analyses to impact studies to lead generation for communities looking to attract businesses. So we cover the whole life cycle of economic development and wanted to bring that lens to this project. It's going to be a comprehensive approach to economic development in the county. And we ground all of that work in data analysis and engagement. So we're getting ideas directly from the community, but making sure that our strategies are data-informed. This is a snapshot of the different phases to expect in this project. We're already in the process of data collection and analysis and stakeholder engagement, but we'll be combining all of our learnings from those pieces in the months ahead to start workshopping some strategies that will be action-oriented. So we'll make sure through the Ithaca area economic development team that we're gut-checking what some of these strategies end up looking like so that they're achievable for the county and that we have the right partners on board. We're working closely with the Economic Development Resource Providers Group through I A E D to provide some guidance on the project and who we should be speaking to throughout the process. We just developed a community pulse survey, which will follow up with you all and make sure that you have that handy. Um, so we can get the community voice and make sure we're factoring in resident and worker and student perspectives on economic development opportunities and in terms that make sense to them, um, not being in the field. And then we'll also be interviewing folks, um, either in focus groups or virtual interviews, so we can delve into subject matter expertise. To give you an idea of where we are on this timeline, we kicked off the project in June and have been deep in an information gathering phase, but we'll be working closely with I A E D to develop and draft strategies over the winter and present a final report in Q one of twenty twenty-five. So that's just a brief overview of the project. I'm going to kick it over to my colleague, Dan Gunderson, who has some questions that will help us understand some opportunity areas with economic development um, from all of your seats and make sure that this is truly representative of Tompkins County and not just one or two areas. Um, you'll notice in the background, I'm going to be taking some notes, but nothing you share will be personally attributed to you. Our goal today is to gather economic development themes and use that to inform our strategies. So with that, I'll kick it over to Dan and if you have questions um, in the chat, I will, I'm not sure I have access to it, but we'll work with the T-PAC team to make sure we're monitoring that. Thanks so much.
Before everyone speaks, I just want to take an opportunity to let everyone, to remind everyone that this is a live meeting.
I recorded.
And recorded.
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, as Lindsay said, my name is Dan Gunderson. I serve as the principal for this project, uh, which means uh, I have to assure that if the uh, that, that we're following the scopes, but more than that, that this um, end product exceeds everybody's expectations. We do this work all across the nation. It's particularly rewarding to be able to do it here in upstate and uh, for Tompkins County. As Kurt mentioned, uh, every five years, best, it's best practice for organizations um, to do, to, to develop a new strategic plan. And I E A D is one of those uh, organizations that uh, certainly is, is well-known and uh, for doing it, doing it right. So uh, it's an honor to be part of this process. We are going to do something a little different here. We're going to use a public meeting to have a frank discussion. And uh, I, I know there are no, um, you know, that you will speak your mind, uh, um, and that's what we're looking for. We are speaking with uh, dozens, dozens of, of individuals, groups throughout the county to get uh, their perspectives. And this, as Kurt mentioned, is really a critical voice to make sure that we're getting the municipalities. And this, as Kurt mentioned, is really a critical voice to make sure that we're getting the municipalities' perspective. The elected and the and 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 the appointed, the official leaders of of the different governmental uh agencies that that are responsible, really for for ensuring that the citizens are are able to thrive here in the county. Um, before we get to it, I do want to mention that our approach to economic development may not be what you might consider more uh traditional. And so now this plan won't be a traditional economic development plan. I don't think today any municipality, any uh region in the United States can produce a traditional economic development plan anymore. And by that, I mean those that focus just on um projects and investments and targeting industries, but rather these plans need to be integrated. And so this is an integrated economic development. And what I mean by that is we're considering all of the inputs for economic prosperity from transportation and infrastructure, workforce and housing, the engagement in the global economy, how different groups come together, how they collaborate. This gets to how things get done, the culture of change. All of this influences whether there can be a healthy ecosystem for growth. So that's what this uh strategy is going to look like. Economic development, the world has changed in the last five years in particular, faster than ever uh at any other time uh for this profession. And so we're excited to be able to produce what really will become um um a a a a marker for for change here. So with that, we are going to have a facilitated conversation. And Kurt mentioned that six questions were sent out. Those are six of dozens that that we have been asking uh in during the course of this process. I'm gonna distill that to three uh just by for for time. Uh, but if you want to go off and take it in any direction uh that feels good to you, please, please do. Um, so the very first question, how does economic development influence the work of T-POC? Now, you'll notice it's not exactly the one I that we gave you, but it's it's uh I thought it'd be most appropriate to begin with that. How does economic development? Like in it in its integrated sense or it's in its traditional sense? Projects and financing, et cetera, or much more broadly, how is that affecting the work of T-POC? Anybody want to start us off?
Well, that's a very open-ended question. Um, I I think uh for municipal government and and town uh government, village government, city government, we're looking at sustainability and economic development is a key to sustainability, not just environmental sustainability, but tax sustainability, population sustainability, education, healthcare. Uh, so economic development is is part of what we have to um participate in to maintain our 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 functions. So, you know, in in the broadest sense, it's our tax base. We rely on property taxes for the most part, occasional grants. And uh if we have population losses or depreciated property, we lose revenue. So um we we have to monitor our economic development and have that as a healthy part of what we offer to be sustainable.
Great, great answer.
Yeah, better than I could do.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Better than I could do. Yeah, we we had, we in the outline municipalities have have, I guess I would say, tended to um look to the um the city and the county as as a sort of a driver of economic um uh development activity. Um, and uh and one of the, one of the things that that I'm most pleased to see about this initiative is is the attempt to engage the outlying uh municipalities in the process. Um, because it's not that we don't think about it, but that we don't, we don't have. Um, I mean, there there are elements of our comprehensive plans that, you know, address the the desire to um, you know, you know, do economic development at some level. But uh but we don't have this sort of of standing groups that are focused on it and working on it in an ongoing basis that 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 that, you know, that organizations like I A E D um bring to the table. So, you know, you ask questions that we may not have given a whole lot of thought to.
Well, as another outlying um municipality, I'm from Ulysses and um economic development's not necessarily a word. I have a lot of constituents wanting us to focus on. And I think it's because economic development has certain connotations um of what it is and that it sounds like new development. And when you're in a bedroom slash agricultural community, that's not necessarily something um many residents want to hear. And um and so I think a more broad definition of economic development that looks like can even look like supporting existing uh businesses and entities and helping them grow in place. Um, I've had, I've seen businesses start in Ulysses that end up relocating outside our boundaries because either they don't have room to grow or they're looking for um a market, a larger market that we can't necessarily provide, um helping, you know, economic development for for our communities, or at least Ulysses um in in would be, we think about it in ways as how can how, or at least I think about in the way it is, is how can I help businesses maintain a long future here um as opposed to getting started and then leaving us? Um, there's benefit to that. The turnover is, you know, a a thing too. Um, but because I think some people fear economic development is outside pressure for uh development that is antithetical to some people's minds about what um small rural municipalities should look like. Um, I think the the terminology has to be defined and explained in a way that um speaks to a variety of different audiences.
Thank you. I I I appreciate that very much, and that gets to the heart of what I meant by integrated economic development, because it really begins with the fundamentals for prosperity. Does any community have what those fundamentals are? The right infrastructure, people who are have been educated so that they're prepared for the world of work and so forth. Before you can be able to grow the economy, let alone then develop it. I think when we start thinking of economic development in a traditional sense, we think we're going right to the development of of new industry and projects. And the world we're in now is to look at this much more holistically. Uh, when Lindsay used the term comprehensive process, that's what we mean. We mean not only reaching out and making sure we've got different voices, but also looking at the the economic development process from a different lens. Um, and that is do small towns have what the what it takes so that they can they can thrive as well? Uh, so that they're not feeding off of the next big project that comes to the city or the county.
I mean, I I can also speak from a small town, Caroline, which um we have no public water, right? For major infrastructure, uh we very recently passed our first zoning law. And that law was very, very much tailored into into targeting and growing the 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 growth of home and small businesses, um which is also a a goal of our comprehensive plan. Um, which is perhaps a little bit different from some others, but we've we've found that small business in our rural community means not only traditional small businesses like plumbers and painters and that sort of thing, but also brand-new experimental smaller markets in agriculture. And so we also have an agriculture committee that's developing a an agricultural plan and in our realization is what is agriculture in our town, which used to have twenty-three very, very large um milk farms. Um, now has one, has really changed into much more micro agriculture developments, and it's very, very vibrant. Um, a another thing that I'll just mention for you is another aspect of economic development for us has been to partner with Dryden in the development of municipal owned broadband, which is an economic driver um on the municipal level because uh especially since COVID, a large percentage, a very significant percentage of our population is working remotely, running businesses remotely. And parallel to that, another economic driver which Caroline is just beginning to um inv- involve itself with, which the town of Dryden has been doing for quite some time successfully, and Dan can say more about this, is also the development of solar farming, um which which provides economic development in the sense of providing cheaper and more accessible energy to local subscribers on the one hand, and also an income source for the town. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, but that's what we're thinking.
Yeah, Tim, that was very helpful because what you've begun to do is to um articulate what the priorities um have been or or are are, you know, those that are coming onto the scene. Let's talk about some of those priorities. Um, someone just mentioned, what are other priorities that you see that you're wrestling with these days or wanting to develop?
In Dambie, we're very aware of the um the the limitations of of ability to to develop a core um residential centers without infrastructure. Um, we have one that's got water and 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 two and and we and we two neither which has sewers. And the um the constraints of of development and the absence of of shared wastewater treatment um essentially leads to to dispersal of both residential and commercial activity. And so you've got none of the benefits of of aggregation, which would be nice to it kind of, they're they're certainly kind of central to developing a sense of place and and sustaining because there's a mutually supportive thing about, you know, businesses can get be similarly locate located than than uh they're they're more attractive to everybody um and more useful in terms of building community. So looking at it from the perspective of supporting the community, um, you know, it the the businesses play a a significant role in that. And we've we've been um we had lost over time many of the businesses that had been, um, you know, take, we take it for granted, you know, the as as the um, as the economic landscape has changed over the last half a century or more, um, smaller businesses have tended to get squeezed out in favor of consolidation into larger entities. Um, and that manifests even in places like the city of Ithaca, which, you know, a generation or two ago had, you know, neighborhood grocery stores and now has, you know, two or three really big ones that serve everybody in the county. Um, those small neighborhood grocery stores were also located in every community in the county, and they're mostly gone. And so the the same thing for hardware, same thing for, you know, any number of others. And so um you kind of e- eviscerate, you know, the the heart of the community when 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 that happens. And we're looking, we're asking whether or not some of that could be retrieved, you know, as as uh sort of a decentralization rather than an increased concentration. And how do we, how do we, how do we support the possibility without without being able to, you know, man mandate it? You can't, you really can't, you can only do just so much with planning tools. But we can be looking to how do we facilitate and enable? Um, and then we look at the private sector to 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 um respond. And um, so that's kind of where we're at. Um, and it's been uh we're we're pleased to see some new entrepreneurial um types willing to take a gamble and and try to start small businesses in the town, which has been uh widely supported and and a, you know, step in the direction of what everyone would like to see more of. That, you know, all of all of our um surveys and and um the feedback on from um, you know, from meetings and so forth has been that people would like to see more of that kind of local economic activity as opposed to simply having to drive to to the very vibrant, um but not next door uh central um opportunities offered by the city and the town of Ithaca.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, I believe that the the gig economy in which we're now living has really changed uh this equation so that more people can work from um um non-urban areas. Uh, the question becomes, as you, as as you said, aggregation of of amenities and and being able to to have that in such a way that people also find a higher quality of life and they don't have to drive a longer distance to find it. But uh I'm more optimistic than ever before. And with this strategy, we'd like to see uh some of the smaller villages and towns really prosper uh and benefit. Let's talk about the partnerships, either amongst municipalities that can make this happen, working together. Are there good examples where where we can propose new solutions or new strategies? Or uh aggregating resources we're improving upon or delivering the needed uh infrastructure that's needed? Let's talk about how municipalities currently work together or can.
To preface that, and I did, Pierre, did you have a question that um?
I mean, I I just wanted to note that in the world of decentralizing grocery and such, that is, those are conversations that we've been having in the city. Um, and while we're on on uh cooperation, like I do think there are real opportunities for us in, I know the city can be scary sometimes, guys, but I think there really are opportunities for us in the city to work with all of you in the town to make stuff work. Like, one of the things that really hits me and that we've been thinking about a lot in the city is, you know, we housing in in the city especially and in our whole area has become too expensive. And we've run out of room to really build more, right? We we do have the infrastructure. We have that, but we've run out of physical space that isn't basically in the lake. And it would be, you know, from from where where I'm sitting, it would be absolutely amazing to be able to work with with all of you guys and your municipalities to try to address how to make sure that people can live here in our communities.
Thank you, Pierre. Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna, and I apologize, I have to actually hop off. Um, I have to get to town hall for uh um an infrastructure meeting. Um, but um what I was gonna say is, is speaking to business owners, um, we in in Ulysses and particularly in the village of Trumansburg, one of the main challenges is finding people to work because there is no housing available in Ulysses. The market is very hot still. And the 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 properties that are available are at a completely unaffordable price point for the people who would be working um in a lot of the hospitality-related businesses that um do start and do do flourish in Ulysses. We cater to a large percentage of tourists. There's a lot of tourist activity that happens in the summer. Um, and not having reasonable places to live um is is really, really challenging. And it's not just the Airbnb short-term rental situation that's driving a lot of that. It's that there simply is not enough physical infrastructure. There's not enough housing. And one of the key things to Pierre's point about how we can be more integrated, we need, public transportation is a huge problem. I have many people in the town of Ulysses who would like to be able to reasonably and consistently use TCAT. I went through graduate school while living in the town of Ulysses at Cornell, and people were like, why aren't you taking public transportation? I said, because I can't afford to pay for childcare for the, you know, the the distance it would take me to actually make public transportation reasonable. And so I constantly worry, and Bob's not on this call, but I constantly worry about the declining um um infrastructure related to transportation that makes it even harder for people, for our communities to be integrated. Um, but as a final note before I go, um, since Mayor Hart is not on, uh the town and the village of Ulyss- uh the the town of Truman, town of Ulysses and the village of Trumansburg have been, have worked um very well together, particularly in the last few years um in integrated approaches from taking over um Camp Barton. Um, there will be a new state facility um in the very near future um to looking at our comprehensive plans to how they can be integrated. to partnering on youth commission and, and youth services and recreation. We're looking for integration. And so I think economic development is a rational place to do it, but it'd be helpful to have some models about how we, we can, we can do that in a more efficient way. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
John?
Thank you. John Zepko with the town of Lansing, and I formerly was with the town of Ulysses. Infrastructure is, is a real issue. We can't, we can't build housing. We can't attract businesses without adequate sewer and water. We can't achieve the densities that we need. We can't prevent the, the sprawl development that so many of the rural communities are concerned about. But that plays into the partnership question that you asked. We, we can't develop infrastructure as a number of small communities trying to do it on our own. We really need to have probably county leadership. You know, we should have a county sewer authority with a unified standard. You know, we should have county water. We should be looking for, you know, leadership from the county as well with, with permitting, building permits. Caitlin spoke a little bit earlier about permitting software. Those are, those are things that can be achieved on an economy of scale that small towns can't do on their own and really isn't going to work in just shared services agreements because there's, there's so many things that get in the way. I think we could just, we could just use a little bit of help from sort of a higher level of government.
John, do you feel like you're a lone voice in that? And with that perspective, or do you think that's accepted, more accepted these days?
You know, that's a good question. I, I don't really know. I, I actually hail from Saratoga County, which did things, you know, more to that method. So I can see how it works. But I, I really couldn't speak to the, to the attitudes and preferences of my cohorts on that.
Thank you.
I, I can just say that this group has discussed in the recent past the challenge of shared code enforcement, for example, which is, I think, an ongoing discussion of shared services. So that's certainly been on the table.
Pierre?
I mean, while we're discussing sewer, I do want to note the effectiveness that we've had. And I can, I'm sure, I'm sure my friends at the town will be able to follow this up right after me. But with our joint wastewater treatment that serves the town of Ithaca, the city of Ithaca, and the town of Dryden. It, it's, it's worked. It's, it is a challenge holding three municipalities like on the same wavelength, but it is working. And at least we're not, we're not throwing sewage into the lake, which is the goal. And, you know, I, I don't know if that's scalable, but I do know that that facility has more capacity than it is currently using.
What do we have from the town of Ithaca planning department?
Hey, everybody. CJ Randall, town of.
CJ.
Hey, how's it going? Formerly also town of Dambie too, so.
Yeah.
I just want to say, do you echo John's comments relative to, and maybe this is a bit out of the scope of what you're looking for, but the county building code administration operation study, I think maybe originated here in TCOG. And there are some really interesting points that come out of that and some points of service that might actually be really beneficial to this group. I'll refrain from opining on shared water and wastewater strategies. But I can say the town of Ithaca, you know, has taken, I think there's some good pieces for other municipalities in there. We only really have a couple key goals relative to economic development. And I'm happy to share that with a consultant team. But they're fairly narrowly tailored and do revolve around streamlining development review and providing development services. That is one thing I think that we can all stand to. All the municipalities can benefit from working together with the county and being clear on different development services that may be available. Even some kind of, I don't want to go so far as to be suggesting some kind of one-stop shopping, but I'm often referring people to many, many different places, you know. One person for the Housing Community Development Trust and somebody else for, you know, IED, for instance, for other services, you know, actual, you know, business services. And then, you know, to many other different places. And so I think it's incumbent on municipalities to also act as partners in development. And maybe that could sound somewhat controversial, but I think that we are, you know. You know, it's great for municipalities to be able to play a role in helping, helping local economic development.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Joel, you'll have to give me a time check. Let me know how we're doing.
Well, we got about 15 minutes before we have a hard stop.
Okay, okay. Well, let's, uh, let's go with one of the questions that we submitted to all of you.
Dan and Tim both have comments they'd like to make, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Joel.
Dan, first, you haven't spoken yet.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'll just add about this intermunicipal cooperation. I, I think that a bold idea would be a sewer and, and/or water authority. If we want to think big steps, I mean, you're right. We have this special joint commission that involves the city and town of Ithaca and Dryden and Kiuga Heights. But that's a very convoluted way to extend infrastructure process. It doesn't have bonding authority, for instance, that you would get out of an authority. So if we want to go big, and I've been advocating for this for, for decades, is an authority-style model would allow for much more coordinated, less political infrastructure development. And, but it's a big step. And we'd have to get the political will together to petition for that enabling legislation from Albany. But I think that would be a bold move if you want to talk about development and to hit on the biggest issue that is facing us, and that's the rents too damn high. And we all are dealing with that in all our communities. I am so excited every time a housing proposal comes to the town of Dryden. We do everything we can to, to hear it and try and work with developers, but it's very, very difficult. Our most recent one had to be fairly heavily subsidized. We had to give a big tax break, but it's a nonprofit serving low and middle-income homes, our, our tenants. And, and so we got behind that. The town kicked in $50,000 of our own money for this project that is on water and in the Hamlet of Arna. But this is sponsored by Ithaca Neighborhood Housing Services. It'll bring some 58 units to our town. But we just don't get enough of these proposals because the developers have, have trouble meeting their cost projections and, and margins that they're trying to reach. But it's, it's all about housing. If we want economic development, we've got to figure out a way to keep all these people that come here every year. We get 10,000 new people coming to our schools, freshmen. But, you know, they cycle through. And if we could make this place more affordable, they'd stick around. But we are really struggling with that. So it's housing.
Thank you, Dan. Dan, Dan mentioned, I was going to go to what would be the bold move that the county could make and that should be included or considered at least in this strategy. And you mentioned the Joint Water and Sewer Authority and, and then discussed the, the crisis that is the American crisis, and that is housing, in trying to find some, something to do about, about that. So that may be more of an aspiration. I don't know if anybody has a solution to that, but what other bold moves could Tompkins County do?
Well.
Make a difference.
This is kind of counterproductive, counterintuitive perhaps, but Caroline, we're as committed to economic development as we are to what I would call ecological development. And we're, we, we try very, very hard to balance the needs of economic development in commerce and in housing with the maintenance and enhancement of what in our area are very, very significant natural, natural resources. So for example, we are the watershed that feeds the city of Ithaca water supply. For us, it is as imperative that we put restraints on or think about restraints in relationship to, to setbacks from creeks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which might not be understood as being business-friendly for the sake of being environmentally friendly. And, and in our area, I don't think we're alone. It's just a, I think it's a, it's a major factor of consideration.
Thanks, John.
Um, Linda?
So I, I just wanted to comment, besides the city and town and Dryden's sewer plant down on the lake, there is another one that's not, that's also on the lake that the village of Kiuga Heights owns. And we serve five municipalities. A slightly different business model, I think, not as, as convoluted. But we all share the same issues. And I'd actually take exception to Pierre's stance that the city's plant has enough capacity. They have enough capacity. We have enough capacity when it doesn't rain. As soon as we get INI, inflow and infiltration into our, our sewer pipes, both plants have issues. And one of the things we're all trying to do is find this inflow and infiltration and, and get rid of it because that's probably the most economic way of increasing our capacity. The other aspects are to enlarge plants. That's, costs a lot of money. And, but it, it is sort of the, the bottleneck for, for development. And, and to take Tim's comments into consideration, you've got this dynamic where in the outlying areas where there is no sewer, you have to have large lots in order to have septic systems. When you have built environments that do have sewer and other developers want to take it upon themselves to actually extend sewer lines, then you can build things that are, are more dense. And, and, but in order to do that, you have to have the sewer capacity at the plants. And so it's, it's money. It's basically money and it's, and it's will to, to be able to think about all these things and find viable solutions for them. So, and we work, we work with the city plant to some degree. So I just wanted to, to put that out, that the, the water and, and I would also say, at least here, we have Bolton Point, which serves, doesn't serve the city, serves a lot of the town. I don't know if it serves all of the town or not. And that's actually a very viable model, very well-run. And again, supplies water for a lot of people and allows development that otherwise couldn't happen.
But the, the state has essentially promulgated a, a, a context, in effect, that, that, that they've made it easier to, to invest in and develop areas that are, that have, already have access to infrastructure, you know, the sewers and the, and the, and the water. If you are one of the many, in our case, the smaller municipalities that don't already have that infrastructure, it's a barrier to entry that, that we have to figure out how to deal with. Because, you know, the only way we can, I don't know if the only way, the, the, the only way we can effectively develop in, in a, in a, in a dense way is to add that infrastructure. And if you have a, you have a policy framework that discourages it because it wants the development to go where the infrastructure already exists, it's essentially a, it's a mandate to sprawl if you're in, in, in the outlying communities. We need, we need a, basically a, a smart growth-enabling context for the municipalities that lack the infrastructure so they could be added. And, and I think that's, that's the, that's the framework that I see that, that's, that's needed in order to, to address a lot of these other issues that you, that you brought up.
In the remaining few minutes that we have, is there anything that any of you would like to say that, that hasn't been said? Well, I want to thank you for this opportunity. And I know it was unusual to conduct essentially what is a focus group of, of, of a very critical audience online and in a public setting. I think this is, this has been very helpful for us. And you, I hope it provides you with some insight as to how we are approaching the county's neck, next economic development strategy. Please know this isn't the last opportunity. If you have anything you'd like to have us think about, consider. We are a data analytics firm, so there'll be a lot of data that will help ground this strategy. If there are areas in particular you think we should be diving into, let us know. Another way in which you could be very helpful is we will have a community survey. And it will be something where you could distribute it to your constituents, to your citizens, to help get the, to help get their voice as well. This is not designed to be a bottom-up process with a lot of public meetings and sessions, but, but rather, if we will have this, this opportunity for public input. It will be kind of a scanned version where people can use smartphones or, or those who have it. And if they don't have it, they, they could utilize someone else's. But it'd be a very simple process to be able to answer a few key questions that we will then slice and dice and, and provide you with the input as to what the, the citizens of Tompkins County are thinking. So again, on behalf of I A E D, Kurt and Heather and my colleague Lindsay, thank you very much for this time.
Dan, we haven't disappointed you too much because you're asking a lot of pointed questions and you bring a perspective to the, to the, to the whole, the overall question of economic development that, that, that has us, has some of us at least sort of scratching our head saying, hmm, I hadn't thought of that. And I think that's, that, that, that could be very valuable in terms of our rethinking the, the whole strategy for the next five years.
Thank you for saying that. It's been very helpful. Rest assured.
Okay, gang. I don't think we have a need of an executive session. Do we, do we have thoughts on what might go on the agenda for next time before we adjourn? We'll leave it up to our leadership to fill in the blanks, huh?
Joel, I do have one item.
Yes.
So we'll, the council will need to review the draft 2025 TCOG schedule.
Yeah.
The meeting schedule. So I'll get that prepared for the, to be an agenda item. I just have a few questions. Would you folks like to continue with the fourth Thursday of the month at three o'clock?
Probably.
Okay, and we'll still keep them bi-monthly?
Well, that we might want to talk about.
Okay.
Well, we need to talk too about the, about the need to have elections and find another.
Yes. Yeah, that'll be included as well. And then the November and December meetings will be adjusted like we did this year.
And just to remind people, when is the next meeting? You're scratching your head? It's in November, is it not, or December?
December 5th.
Yeah, okay, because avoiding Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Correct. There you go.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you all. See you next time.
Thank you, Joel.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
All right. Bye.